All right, it is 4:30. Welcome to all of you. Nice to see a good crowd out there today. Before we stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want you to be mindful of the fact that Wayne Barahona is not with us today. His father-in-law, and I don't, I just heard this now, I don't know his name. If anybody knows Wayne's father-in-law, you may certainly speak up. But anyway, Wayne is not here today because his father is in hospice and not doing well. So, that may be something you want to keep in mind as we go to a moment of silence together. So I'd ask you to join me.
Is it his father-in-law or father?
I've heard.
Father-in-law.
Okay.
Anyway, moment of silence and then I'll ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, if we could have roll call, please.
Brad Kent?
Here.
Sean Brewster?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Wayne Barahona? Tom Eggers?
All right, we have the agenda. Just one, a couple of modifications under 2. B. The update on Lewis and Clark is going to be postponed until December 18, since we're not here with the full crew today. And then the other thing is just a minor change under number 5A. Before we can have our first reading, we have to have a resolution. So, subpoint 2 and 3 are flip-flopped there. Okay? So with those changes, I will entertain a moment...
...a resolution on the Chief of Police Council.
Oh, yep, that's right. Sorry. There is also, and that is where, what do we put there?
It's already on the 5D. There will be a resolution that goes along with that. I can read that when we get to that.
Okay. So 5D also, we will have a resolution added on to that in terms of talking about Police Chief. So with those changes in addition, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we have public forum. This is a time set aside for comments from the general public on issues or things you'd like to bring up that are not related to something later, further on in the agenda. Are there any comments that need to be made at this Seeing no response, we'll move on then. I would like to read proclamation regarding Giving Tuesday. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Sheldon, and whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year, now therefore I, Greg Yales, Mayor of Sheldon, of the City of Sheldon, do hereby proclaim December 3, 2019, as Giving Tuesday in the City of Sheldon, and encourage all citizens to give back to the community in a meaningful way. So, Ryan, is there anything else you would like to, Ryan Hock, this came at his request? Is there anything you'd like to add or share with us about that?
No, I just want to thank the city and the mayor for the pro- sorry, thank the mayor and the city for the proclamation. And again, to kind of echo the words, to encourage everybody to come out on Giving Tuesday and actively support causes like Village Northwest. The city and other partners with us have been tremendous in supporting the Village, but we want to encourage the citizens of Sheldon to support all philanthropical causes on that day, whatever that might be. And that includes not just monetary giving, but volunteering and thinking of others, or even just sharing a kind word. So, thank you very much.
Very good. For those of you that know, this was Ryan Hock, the Development Director with Village Northwest. And thank you and Barry for bringing this to our attention, Motion, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? for making that request. I wholeheartedly support that. Thank you. If not, roll call, please. Do we need to sign it?
Kent?
All right, I will sign that a minute before we move on.
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
You can go ahead and sign with him.
Brewster?
Aye.
All right, and we have nothing under old business, so moving right along to new business and public hearings. We have the hearing open, so we do not need a motion at this time, as I understand it, correct? The hearing remained open from our last meeting regarding the amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to downtown residential use. Is there anyone here that would like to address that from the public at this time? No? All right. You want to, okay, April, please state your name for the record and...
April Schaefer. So obviously you guys know where I stand on this amendment. But I just
Thank you.
wanted to ask a few questions to provide food for thought as you guys are considering going through the first and second and third hearings and approving it. So, do we currently utilize a special exemption and variance process? Does this amendment change require all stipulations to be met? Could we make the amendment verbiage more restrictive, such as provide two private parking spots, since parking seems to be the major issue? If you want a special exception, you need to complete a variance request, pay the $125, and then send letters for neighbors to allow comments. So, if this is correct, I mean, I feel like there is a process that allows comments so that the unwanted ones can be weeded out. Does the Board of Adjustment have to approve the request, which my understanding is no? So I feel that there is a process in place that can monitor and approve these special exemptions. That makes sense. And the ones that don't make sense or fall into the vision of our downtown, those can be denied. So I just ask that you please consider moving forward with the amendment to zoning ordinance pertaining to downtown use, residential use. Thank you.
April, it might be helpful if you could leave a list of those questions that you've asked us for further review.
Absolutely.
If you could get that to us at some point.
Yep, I could probably just email it over to Sam and then he can shoot it off to you guys.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments regarding this issue?
I'm the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think it would be appropriate to answer the parking question for certain while the item is open, or hearing is open. So Micah, could you help me out with that one? We talked about this, and when I wrote this, I wrote it to be construed as wide open as possible to give the Board of Adjustment room for leeway and judgment. And I know there's some concerns have been raised since that time, so maybe you can help address that. Clearly the intent is not for people to apply and say, well, you can just park on the city parking lot. If there's going to be off-street parking somewhere else, there needs to be a lease shown to the Board of Adjustment.
The issue is what the proposed ordinance would require in regards to off-street parking. We're looking at Section 12.3 of the zoning ordinance, and under the proposal, each dwelling unit would, at a minimum, have to have two off-street parking spaces. 12.3 of the zoning ordinance would have to be read along with the other parking requirements of the zoning ordinance, specifically Section 19.5. And it's important to understand, excuse me, to understand that under 19.5, an off-street parking requirement, and this is from that section, would be a parking space located on the same lot as the building or you served, except under a few exceptions. And the exception that Sam is referring to is you can have off-street parking on a location other than the property that's being served if there is some type of written agreement in place where parties have agreed to share certain spaces. So that would not include a public parking lot. Does that answer your question?
Does that answer your question?
Okay. If there are no more public comments at this point, then I would say we need to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
And then moving on to what is on here is point 3. The resolution approving the amendment to the zoning ordinance by Amendment Section 12.3 pertaining to residential uses in the business commercial downtown district. Can we appro- we need a motion to approve that then, correct?
You, and if I might?
Yes.
This does not commit you to approving the ordinance. This is the next step to approving the ordinance, so I do recommend approval.
Okay, so a motion for that then, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Pete, are you staying with us on this? Are you up to speed here?
Yes.
Okay.
Fine.
Good. If there are no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent? Aye.
Okay. So, now moving back to point 2, which is our real now, point 3. Need a motion concerning the first reading of the ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, so on and so forth.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye. Brewster?
Aye.
Okay. So the next reading then would be in two weeks, the second reading. Is that correct?
December 4.
Okay. All right, moving on then to subpoint B. The second reading of the ordinance amending Section 105.10 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to waste storage containers. Motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion to go to the second reading.
Second.
Any additional comments or questions on that? Or any of the haulers, anything you'd like to add at this point?
Just to clarify, the motion, the motion is to approve second.
The second reading.
To approve second reading and go to third reading.
And go to third reading.
Okay. So I guess we have to have a vote on that. Don't we have a motion support? So roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye. Hamel?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on then to somewhat related item, the second reading. Take a motion to have a second reading of the ordinance amending Section 106.04 of the Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Support.
Comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Okay. So the next reading then would be in two weeks, the second reading. Is that correct?
December 4.
All right, moving on then to subpoint B. The second reading of the ordinance amending Section 105.10 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to waste storage containers. Motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion to go to the second reading.
Second.
Any additional comments or questions on that? Or any of the haulers, anything you'd like to add at this point?
Just to clarify, the motion, the motion is to approve second.
The second reading.
To approve second reading and go to third reading.
And go to third reading.
Okay. So I guess we have to have a vote on that. Don't we have a motion support? So roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on then to somewhat related item, the second reading. Take a motion to have a second reading of the ordinance amending Section 106.04 of the Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Support.
Comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Okay. All right, then we'd like to move on to a review of the consultant's quotes for the chief of police search. And Sam, I'm going to let you take over on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. We sent out RFQs, or requests for quotes, to six different firms. We received four responses. We received a response from William Mulder and Associates. Mr. Mulder is the former Des Moines Chief of Police. Jeff Kahler, former Carroll Chief of Police. SGR Recruiting and GovHR USA also submitted proposals. And there were two others, including David Drone and Associates of Minnesota, and Brent Henson, who did the city manager search last year. Both declined submittals due to workload. Brent Henson did strongly recommend, or he highly, spoke highly of both Jeff Kahler and Bill Mulder. After researching the top two, which were William Mulder and Jeff Kahler, my recommendation to you is Kahler Consulting. I like what Mr. Kahler brings in terms of his experience in northwest Iowa. He recently handled the, or helped the city of LaMars. And I spoke with the mayor of LaMars the other day, and he spoke highly of Jeff's services. Jeff, being a former Carroll Chief of Police, is familiar with northwest Iowa. And he also offers testing capabilities that the other, he was just a cut above the rest in terms of his ability to do the testing and assist in the selection process. So, when I spoke to him today, he did not believe that the cost would be $15,000, simply because there's so much work that we're doing upfront. The job description is already being updated, and Mike and I have reviewed it, so we'll ask him to review it also. But there isn't a lot that needs to be done with the job description. The draft position profile has already been written, and I will be sending, I can, we'll send that to him for review shortly. And so I think we can, we can go ahead and proceed with approving the agreement. The other three, well, all four proposals are a matter of public record for anybody who asks. I didn't print all of those for the resolution. The resolution just includes Mr. Kahler's as an exhibit, so. If I might, could I just take a moment and read the resolution?
Yes.
Before you, if you would. This is a resolution retaining services of Kahler Consulting LLC to assist with chief of police hiring process, whereas Chief Lyle Balcom is retiring on November 27, 2019, after 30 years of dedicated service to the city of Sheldon, including 16 and 1/2 as chief of police. And Lyle, you can back out if you want. I'm going to change your mind. Okay? Just thought I'd ask. Whereas on November 6, 2019, the Sheldon City Council requested RFQs to be sent for consulting firms to assist the city in filling the position, whereas the RFQs were sent to six firms. The city received four responses. Jeff Kahler is recommended based on his experience and professional work as a chief of police in northwest Iowa and as a consultant helping other cities in northwest Iowa. The proposal was submitted in November 10 and is included as an exhibit for this resolution.
All right. So then I think to move this forward, we should have a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
And then any comments or questions, discussion?
I will have an update for you on December 4 as to the status of the process.
Okay.
I just think, looking through them all too, he was about the best fit for our community.
I would agree. Incidentally, for press-wise, his quote was for $150 an hour, not to exceed amount of $15,000 plus expenses. And as Sam mentioned earlier, he does not expect that we will hit the $15,000 mark. My only comment, and I think Brad used, kind of said this the last time, having been with our city manager search, having gone through it prior to that without one, and then using one the second time around, it was a much better process all the way through. Better lot of candidates, the circles that they run in, they have contacts all over. I think in the end, this money will be well-spent in getting a very important position filled for the city. Any other questions or comments at this time? If not, we'll have a roll call, please.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to our city code updates. And we need a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the city code of ordinances by adding a new section pertaining to operating budget preparation.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Sam, if you would just fill us in a little bit, please, on that.
Earlier this year, the legislature approved Senate File 634, which establishes thresholds for property tax increases in local governments. The law adds additional notice requirements and transparency to the budget process, including an additional public hearing. This ordinance is necessary to incorporate the changes in the code regarding the budget preparation. The rest of the code updates, I'll talk about in a moment. Those can all wait for the comprehensive update.
Okay. Are there any questions at this point? Either from council or public, this is your opportunity to ask questions on this one as well. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Second reading will be on December 4.
Okay.
This is a, let me introduce this.
Yes, would you?
This is a resolution approving an agreement with Iowa codification to update the city code. There is a long list of code updates that have not been made over the last 20 years, and they're all based on, mainly on legislative changes. Some expand the city's authority, some contract the city's authority. All of these are important policy items to discuss. Well, some of them aren't very important. I'm not sure what pet awards is, but, and vapor products, things like that, some aren't regulated as much by the city. But it's still important that we update these ordinances. And so, what this does is this allows us to work with our codification group to come up with a package of ordinance updates. And then sometime next year, we will, probably after the budget, we'll bring it forward for first reading. And in between that time, we will, we will get the information out for review as well. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for this to be reviewed. This is much more cost-effective to do this this way than for Micah and I to do this piecemeal one ordinance at a time. I did put, and I handed this out to the media, too, some examples of why this is important. One is traffic regulations, text messaging, parking, tobacco enforcement, cemetery regulations, including requiring the city to adopt and enforce the rule, allowing any veteran who has purchased an intermittent space to purchase, you know, that they, that a space would be made available, if possible, for the spouse of a veteran. Rules regarding utility service discontinuation and lean process, nuisance assessment, streamlining some of that. Officers' communication devices, Chapter 708 of the code has been amended by adding a new section that prohibits a person from attempting to remove a peace officer's communication or control device, solid waste, social host, disorderly conduct, railroad warning signals. And, you know, one thing, one, another one would be conflict of interest, raises exemption from $1,500 to $6,000 per year. The other item is, if you remember, earlier this year, we ran with a vacancy for the position of mayor, the issue of the 40-day waiting period versus the 60-day process for filling the position. I didn't mean to say waiting period, I meant to say you have up to 60, under our current ordinance, you had up to 40 days to fill the position before a special election is triggered. And state code was changed quite some time ago to allow 60 days for proper public input and for the process to move forward. So, I'll stand for questions.
I think we need to bring them up to date, so we don't have a lot of choice.
You know, as I was reading through this list, which was last changed 21 years ago, I'm looking forward 21 years, wondering what kind of code of codification changes would have to be made at that time. You know, vapor products is one that 21 years ago, nobody knew anything about. Texting is another thing, probably 21 years ago, nobody knew anything about. 21 years down the road, we may have an ordinance dealing with driverless cars, for instance. I mean, who knows? I mean, some of the things probably haven't even been invented yet. But, yes, I agree, this is a good way to do it. So, that will be coming up again down the road. So receive that for information, or must we pass this resolution?
I'd like approval for passing the resolution.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on then to review of the bids or proposals for redevelopment of city-owned properties at 1023 Garfield Avenue, 1401 South Second, and 421 West Park Street. Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the bid deadline was noon on Friday for the sale of these three, or for proposals to be submitted. The properties, as the mayor mentioned, are 1023 Garfield Residential Property, the former Sunset Motel at 1401 South Second, an old 60, and DJ's Redemption Center at 428 West Park. We did not receive any bids prior to the deadline on Garfield Avenue or the Sunset. We did receive one submittal for DJ's, and that was from Kent Lorenz. Angie and I opened it on the afternoon of the 8th. Mike has reviewed it, and it is not considered a valid submittal because it is incomplete in scope and is missing a deposit. We can, we can talk about that in just, in just a moment. We did receive a proposal this afternoon from Kerwin Sterling on the Sunset. And I put that in front of all of you. You really have three options, and then we'll get into, into some additional options, too. You could rebid it. Here are the main options that I put in the report, and then there's some additional options that we can discuss, too. One would be to rebid mid-January or so, lower the price to a minimum of $1, which might help, but probably only with the Garfield property. So, removing the asbestos only and re- So removing the asbestos only and rebidding, remove the asbestos and demolish the structures and then seek bids. Or one option, option one and a half, would be to partner where the city would kick in an amount for the, for the asbestos, or to assist with the asbestos removal and work out an agreement that way. So both Kent Lorenz's proposal for DJ's and Kerwin Sterling's proposal for Sunset are essentially that, where they're asking the city to assist with the asbestos, not all of a cost, but part of it. And then they would, they would handle the rest. So I think it would be appropriate to, to hear from, from those two if they would like to present their idea. And then we can take it under advisement to decide what the next, what the next step would be. As far as the Garfield property, there aren't people lined up for that one. And we can tie that into, tie that into the other two in terms of going back out for proposal, or we could just clean it up and take care of it and try to solve the lot.
All right.
We could hear from...
Sterling's, Lorenz's, either of you, when you make a comment? Please step forward.
Kerwin Sterling?
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I would like to offer to purchase the Sunset, the property labeled as the Sunset Plaza Motel, located in the city Sheldon, O'Brien County. The purchase price would be $1. And the, under the following conditions, we have four conditions on there, and I think you guys have that music in front of you. So under there, it would be that the owner should pay $25,000 towards the projected cost of about $45,000 or something similar to that, without any unseens. We're not sure if it would run, where it would run for cost above that. So the buyers, the city would pay $12,500 upfront upon completion of the asbestos removal, the demolition, the cleanup of the existing motel, the removal of the garages, the signage posts out front, or I guess a code violation for the city. And making the house habitable is number one. Number two, we would ask that the Sheldon Fire Department be involved and do a control burn for the, after the asbestos has been removed, and they have paperwork showing that has been removed. And then next would be the, the owner warrants that the property would be transferred to the buyer free and clear of any liens or encumbrances. Item four is buyers agree to have the asbestos removed, the two wings of the motel, the garage signage removed, lot leveled, and the house repaired to a habitable state before we would get the final $12,500 then. So that essentially keeps, helps us, or motivates us to finish the job. And I guess, is that something you guys would like to digest? Any questions on that, or as to any part of that?
Your plans are then to update the house, make the, whatever?
The house will make habitable. As far as the others, we would have to get with zoning or anything before we would try and do anything else. Be it a storage units, or if I decide to put in another half a dozen mo- mobile homes or park, or add to the park, or something like that. My main goal is to clean it up and make it, try and, you know, following the, they have the, the new possible brewery thing going down there. We'd like to keep this end of town, or keep working on this end of town to get it cleaned up, if you will.
So there are potential plans for further development beyond just fixing up the house?
Yes, exactly, exactly. Obviously, it's, otherwise, it's a lot of work for nothing.
Right.
And if I want to hobby, it's not going to be that.
Todd, what is that zoned as right there?
It's half and half, right?
I think the, without looking at a zone, leave the west half as zoned, our general commercial, and leave the east half as zoned, commercial residency one.
So I could potentially put in another half a dozen mobile homes for housing, if you will.
Okay.
And, and yeah, I'd have to demo all the concrete out, and there's actually a basement under the one end of the motel and stuff like that, that would all have to be resolved and filled and so forth, so.
Okay. Sam, you want to comment?
Yes. So Kerwin, am I correct in understanding that your offer caps the city's participation at $25,000?
Exactly.
Plus the transfer, which would be handled by our city attorney?
Real estate stuff, yeah. Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
And then I will absorb the rest of it.
Further questions, council?
Is that something Brad, you'd be, did you ever?
We visited about it, but we haven't made a decision.
Okay.
I haven't got, the other two, I haven't got Denny?
On the same page, yeah.
And Scott in a room to...
Okay.
We've looked at it, but we haven't sat around in a circle and...
Yep.
...discussed it. Would you stand correct on that, Scott? Yeah, so...
Of doing a burn, then?
Yeah. So we wouldn't commit to that as this, as of right now.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, by the time this plays out, I would assume they would have that resolved or that part of it answered.
All right. Any, there are no... Pete, do you have any questions for Kerwin?
Well, no, it sounds like an interesting proposal, I think, something we ought to take a look at and try and coordinate. What we think, if it's fallible or not, I think we need a little time to look at it.
It would limit your liability, or your, your cost upfront.
Exactly.
And then it's up to me to keep the costs in line after that.
Yes, yes. Okay, good.
Any other?
I think that's all the questions, so thank you, Kerwin.
Thank you.
Kent, would you like to comment as well?
Yes.
State your name when you get to the mic, please, just for the record.
Kent Lorenz. Understand my initial bid was not within scope, and it did not include a deposit, for very good reason. The initial estimates that you provided us for the demolition of this property came up to $54,000. And so, yeah, that's enough to scare anyone away. So that reflects the city's, or estimates from Alloy Specialties and from a local contractor. And what we found, was a better way, we found a contractor that will do the job for $12,500, all said and done. But we also feel that the cost of $12,500 for roughly one-third acre of land on Sheldon's west side is, is not a very good price either. So we're asking, similar to Mr. Sterling, that the city contribute $8,000 to the demolition and asbestos removal, and we would contribute the $4,500. Any questions I can answer for you, or?
See?
My contractor is experienced in this type of work. It is, and I have his estimate here, too, which I did, you should have a copy of yet from, you guys destroyed my bid.
Oh, I have, I have your bid, it's in the packet.
It was included with that. The estimate for demolition?
I just remember there being one sheet of paper.
Mitchell has an excavation.
Okay.
It's in the packet.
Okay. All right. Good.
I do have.
We have.
Go ahead.
Page 69.
Yeah, we do have it.
We have it.
We have it, so. I guess my question would be, what are your plans for the property? If any?
Okay, other than it's just being adjacent to my existing property, yeah, we'd like to acquire it. Immediate plans, there aren't any, but as you know, in the fire, I lost a lot of storage, so the plans may be in the future with to build another, much smaller, storage facility.
Okay.
There are no plans set in stone for that right now.
Sure, sure, it's just speculation at this point. Okay? Any other questions? For Kent?
Both our proposals, mine and Mr. Sterling's, you know, they stand to save the city a substantial amount of money. Looking at your estimates and stuff, so...
Yes.
My recommendation would be that we, that the council consider a motion to authorize the city attorney and I to negotiate with these, with these two parties and bring forward a proposal for the council to consider.
Understand Sam's request?
Since we asked for proposals and we didn't get any that met the criteria, do we have to submit other creative offers?
You make a good point, and I'm not, and I'm not, it's not an exclusive negotiation at this point. By doing it this way and doing it publicly, we're basically saying, these two have stepped up, and they're offering us this. And if somebody else wants to come forward, they do have the opportunity to, to do that. You know, this is unusual, because we're outside of the process that we is, and, you know, if we want, we can go back to the drawing board and open it up again. It seems like we have a couple of good proposals that we could, we could vet, and then if somebody else comes forward and says, "Hey, me too," then you can hear them out.
Okay. Everybody knows...
Right.
...what they offered.
But they knew that when they submitted it, because the bidding period had closed, and as soon as the, their bids were filed, they became a public record instantly, so...
Okay.
And then by doing it this way, too, it also extends the our property that we can let it sit for a bit and see if anybody's...
I think the goal is, we want to get rid of these guys.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make this covered for, I guess that's a question for Micah. If we change now and negotiate with...
Brad, keep in mind that any city property that you dispose of has to go through a public hearing process, correct? A tentative, and I underscore tentative, agreement is reached with these potential buyers, be a public hearing process, that has to happen before any deal can be finalized. Okay? And I bring that up, the process. And two, keeping that in mind, I think it is important to think about whether there's an appropriate way to make sure others know that the city's entertaining other options so that if people are interested, we hear from them sooner, rather than going through this work and then getting to a public interest expressed at that time, where we've gone back and forth and come up with ideas, and it gets kind of late in the game to address other alternatives. So I'm certainly not opposed to Mr.'s suggestion to see if there's a tentative agreement to be reached, but I think it is important to make sure others are aware of the opportunity, because we are outside that bidding period, or proposal period that you had established.
Good. I like the idea of negotiating with them and moving forward on it.
Do you make that a motion?
I will.
Okay.
I will second that.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Okay.
This may be on the December 4 agenda, but it just, it depends.
Okay. Agenda's getting long.
Almost it would be a shorter agenda, too.
All right.
Did we want to do anything about 1023 Garfield at this time?
Take any reasonable offer we get.
Kerwin, $1.
So we'll just sit on that for...
Yeah, I'll bring it back with the others.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's move on then to the Sheldon Committee, the ambulance team, nation of quotes for a new ambulance. Remember to state your name for the record.
Ms. Kevin Miller, and I'm the director of the Sheldon Ambulance. Along with me, I have Kristen Hahn, Assistant Director for the Sheldon Ambulance. Since the budget approval for the 1920 budget, SCAT, the committee that was put in charge of searching for a new ambulance, has done a lot of work. We looked at various entities and sought out bids. And the two bids we are coming forward with you today are Arrow and also Lifeline. Arrow is coming in at $154,982, plus the new COT would be $43,800, giving us a total of Lifeline's total would be $208,029. We are coming forward with a proposal of going with Arrow for our bid. Are there any questions?
Your last one came from Arrow, correct? Ambulance?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Thank you. Yep.
If I might?
Yep.
Could you address the trade-in versus the fleet expansion?
Yes, absolutely. So moving forward with SCAT, we know that Sheldon's expanding. We know that the call volume is definitely increasing, as you can see through our various budget that we, and revenue that we're bringing in, as well as additional expenses with different things. Looking at a five-year timeframe, in 2015, we had 543 calls. Today, we are roughly around 563 calls. That's about 100, it's about the same right now, but at the end of the year, we're going to be looking at about 100 more calls by the time the year is done. We also are seeing various times where SCAT 1 and SCAT 2 are both out of town due to various needs, whether it's a 911 call, whether it's a transfer. We are seeing that becoming a problem that we are having. And we also did do our research and diligence when we looked at trade-in cost. We're only expecting to get about $6,500 out of our 2012, and we feel it would be in the best interest of our community and taxpayers to just retain that and make us a fleet of three, always ensuring that we are having a rig in city limits or available for 911 calls.
One question that I...
Yes.
...came across my mind as I was reading that, we have a rig, will we have, will we have the people to man the rig?
Absolutely.
How is, how is your current staff, or current team now in terms of numbers?
Our current numbers are about the same as they were in 2015. Looking at our staffing model, we are looking at, if SCAT 1 and SCAT 2 are both unavailable, we would follow the same procedures we're following now, in which we would page out Sheldon SCAT first responders, along with Sheldon Fire, and together, we would man that ambulance, ensuring that that ambulance is ready to go, which is a huge difference from what we have now. Right now, we only have Sheldon fire and Sheldon first responders responding with no transporting ambulance, so we're waiting at least ten, fifteen minutes for one to get here if they respond.
Okay. Uh, and last year, you were at six twenty-five in terms of number of calls, you're talking six hundred and sixty-three upwards of?
That's our projections.
Is that the most calls you've ever had? I mean, we have data going back to two thousand and ten. Did you ever have that number of calls prior to that? So we are
We don't believe so.
breaking pace than this year.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Any questions from you guys?
Nope. We just had a good discussion the other night when the SCAT, fire, and EMA met and Sam, so I would say everybody's on board.
Okay.
And Scott may allude more to that if you'd like.
Scott Monicki, I'm the assistant fire chief of the Sheldon Fire Department. Um, when two ambulances are out of town, they do page the fire department. We respond to the scene. Generally, there is somebody from the ambulance that will arrive as well, but we do wait until another community's ambulance shows up. A lot of the communities around us have one ambulance, so if they're already busy, it just extends that time. So this will eliminate a lot of that time by having a transporting ambulance available. But it really won't change anything in the service that we have, other than be able to transport. So, we really support this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Yes.
Uh, right now, you go, I'm assuming you've got a crew on call, and then a second crew on call?
So how our staffing model works right now, SCAT one is staffed twenty-four-seven by about three to four people. Um, and then we move to SCAT two, which is our mass response rig. Um, and that rig will, anyone who is available can respond to that. We have a good system going right now, so if SCAT one is unavailable, say on a transfer, then we will send out a message to all our members, seeing who's available, and we've had really good response with that. Since I've been on the team, we have not had a time where SCAT two hasn't responded. And like Scott said before, ever since I've been on the team, there's been a SCAT member responding to when Sheldon fire gets paged when there's no transporting ambulance.
So you're not worried at all that we're going to burn out volunteerism?
We have actually talked to all the members on our team, and as you can see, they all support this idea.
Mike, Mr. Mayor? Yes. Can I have a question first? Yeah. I have just one more question.
No worries.
In terms of three ambulances, how often does that happen in a, in a given year? Would you, on average, would you say that the third one is needed?
Uh, supply and demand, that's my answer for that. Um, I would say this past year, just recalling from memory, I would say at least four or five times that we've had to wait for a transporting ambulance.
Okay.
And then you, along with that question, how many times have both ambulances been out of town that we didn't have, that both of them are gone at the same time? Is it more than that?
Too many.
To count?
Much more than we would like.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Which is why we are coming to you.
Okay. Sam, you wanted to come in?
So, I just wonder, I wanted to bring this up to you, you and I have talked about this before, and you had called me a few months ago, uh, and Spencer was in an, in an emergency and needed an assistance with a transfer, and you said that that's, that's very rare.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I believe that, that there's, that's only happened a couple of times. It isn't, it, it, is that, is that something that you can address for us? Because it's something that a couple of the council members and I have, have heard about, and I, I have defended it by saying it was a very rare situation, and we had another ambulance in, in town.
Mm-hmm.
Would you mind addressing that, because I think that's important?
Absolutely. So we do have policies in place that allow the assistant director and myself to make that, um, that movement to withhold from going on a transfer. Um, and Spencer has contacted us. There's a lot of agencies around here, Primgar is another hospital that's contacted us. And if we have the crew available, if we have another ambulance in town that we know can respond and is staffed, then we will do it. We've talked to them, and we understand the circumstances, um, behind that because we believe all people should have the right to be transported to higher care. But like Sam said, it is a very rare occasion that that happens.
Okay.
What's your, uh, two thousand and twelve, what's the other ambulance again?
We have a two thousand and twelve and a two thousand and sixteen for years.
How many miles on that one?
The two thousand, um, sixteen, um, has approximately seventy-eight thousand miles on it, and then SCAT two has a hundred and twenty-three thousand. And keep in mind, the SCAT two that we traded off, um, when we got our two thousand and sixteen only had about a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, and that was in nineteen ninety-nine. So you can see the amount of miles that we're putting on more than what the other one did.
Mm-hmm. Is that in part just to, I mean, the number of transfers, it happens a lot quicker now than it used to? I mean, it's not that we have that many more sick people or injured people, it's just, is it more of the tendency to get them to a larger hospital sooner?
I, I think it would be both. I think it's because nine-one-one is increasing as well as transfers are increasing.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, guys, for your presentation and all your hard work, not only on this proposal, but day-to-day throughout the year.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service to this community very much.
Thank you.
And that goes to all of you sitting out there as well. Thank you. All right, then we need to approve the resolution.
Yes, sir.
I'll take a motion for that, please.
I make the motion to approve the purchase of a new ambulance from Arrow Manufacturing.
Support.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kent?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
All right, that carries. Todd, it's your turn, we want to hear about the airport's, uh, capital improvement plan request.
Yeah, so first, I just want to make clear that the airport commission is planning to be here on December fourth to discuss this plan with you, and that's when we're actually looking at action on this plan. But what I wanted to make clear to you, the difference between the airport's plan and other CIP plan is that our other CIP plans that churn in that you guys will be approving here shortly, when, when you approve those plans, that's what they are, they're a plan. You don't have to necessarily put dollars. The difference with the, with the airport's one is this FAA is involved. And, and the FAA has an expectation that when you approve this plan, that you have the local match dollars available to fund the first several years of that plan. And if, if, if you approve it, um, I want you to look, uh, it's, by the way, it's on page one hundred and five of one hundred and seven of your packet, if you want to look at it. But, um, if you look at two thousand and twenty-three, there's an example of where it gets really important. Uh, so that's the fourth year of the plan, and it calls for design of a parallel taxiway. What I want you to notice is the cost of that design is a hundred and six dollars. The local match is ten percent of that because the FAA funds the other ninety percent. So our local match is only sixteen thousand dollars for the study, so that's a, a good deal. But what's important to note is if you approved and did the design, and then the following year, two thousand and twenty-four, you see construction of a parallel taxiway at two-point-one million dollars, which has a local match of two hundred and ten thousand. If you didn't do that project, FAA has the right to take away the ninety percent funding that they give you. So at that point, instead of that hundred and sixty thousand dollar study costing you sixteen, that hundred and sixty thousand dollar study would cost you six thousand. So, it's important that if you get to the point of doing studies, that you are willing to commit dollars to the project. I'm not advocating for or against any of these projects. I just want to make sure that you understand how the process works and that you can look at this plan now, and if you have questions between now and December fourth, please reach out to your airport commission members that, that voted for this plan so that you can have a better discussion on December fourth. I can try to answer anything else, but that's the, that's the guts of why this plan is different than the standard CIP that we had.
Are there any questions for Todd at this time?
Todd, I've got a question.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate it.
Can you, on this proposed plan, um, approve it piecemeal? In other words, some parts of the plan are in, some parts of the plan are out?
You could remove portions of the plan. So we, we had to submit a draft plan to the FAA by the fourteen, or by the fifteenth of November, uh, which we did. And they expect a approved plan from the city council by December fourth. So, they've already come back and, and made comments on the proposed plan, saying, hey, yeah, it's a great plan, but we can't guarantee you, currently can't guarantee you that we're going to have one-point-eight-nine million available in two thousand and twenty-four. So they've already commented, say, we may have to kick that project down. Yes, you could, you could have years with no projects. That's what you're asking? You could take part of it out. They're only going to hold you accountable for about the first three to four years. That's their expectation. Then once you get into design, that's when they truly hold you accountable for the dollars.
And then as you move forward, even if the plan is approved, if there's further approval before you actually are committed?
Correct. Because the FAA will approve the plan, not knowing if they have the dollars, and then they have to later tell you, we approved the dollars. The tricky part with the FAA is, is they come back at a later date and say, um, here's your goal letter, we got the dollars, now we have to be in a position to pay our share. But they kind of leave you in the dark for a fair amount of time before you know that. So it's important to plan ahead that you have the dollars for the project if they say yes.
Remind us again what the top-end dollar, dollar amount is that we're talking?
Say that again?
Remind, worst-case scenario in terms of, of spending, what the city's portion would be in the ninety-ten match?
Well, you've got to look down the projects every year. I mean, year, year one has, is the total of, total project of thirty-seven thousand. City's match is fifty-six hundred. But year four is two-point-one million, our share of two-ten. Year six is one-point-five million, city share a hundred and fifty thousand. Now granted, you could approve this plan now, and they're not going to hold you to the hundred and fifty thousand matching to the one-point-five million. But they certainly wouldn't want you planning for the ability to come up with the two hundred and ten thousand on year four.
In other words, if, if the plan is committed to, we're really looking at some sort of general obligation debt?
Absolutely.
Or some sort, right, but in, in terms of going into this eyes wide open, it's important that, that we know going over the next two weeks as we think about this and prepare for the airport's presentation that
Correct.
this is an important proposal that they're making, but the price tag means that our investment is, is significant.
I'll let, I'll let the airport commission speak to as why they selected which project. Actually, Jeff, you're one of our airport commission members, but it's, it's meant for a deeper discussion on December fourth.
Okay.
I just didn't, we just didn't want to hit you with this on December fourth and then expect you to do that and approve a plan all at the same meeting. Wanted to give you some time to digest because it's, it's a little bigger. Some of you, Pete, you might remember, we got into a situation once where we didn't do a project because the FAA would have taken their share back. Uh, that was a number of years ago.
In terms of history, excuse me, in terms of history, uh, those projects that we have pursued with design, for instance, the design process, I mean, how often did they come through then with, uh, the actual, when it came to building? I mean, that, is that a, quite often, the majority of the time?
Um.
Seldom?
I, I believe in, in, in my time here, the FAA has always come up with their money, just maybe not in the initial funding year.
I see.
So they may say, it's a great project, we want to help you do it, but you got to back it off. But they have always come around with their ninety percent.
So in, in reality, if we commit to a phase one design phase or whatever, as you said, it most likely is going to develop into an actual project?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you get to that point, you should have every intention the project's going to happen.
Okay. All right. Further questions for Todd? And we will look forward to hearing from the airport commission in a couple of weeks. Thanks, Todd. All right, our, uh, final item on our new business is consider the resignation notice of rec coordinator James Lowry. Do you want to handle that one, Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. James was hired in, uh, February, he's a shared, a resource with NCC and the LLRC, and we're disappointed to lose him. He's pursuing his dream, going to Missouri, uh, working for Missouri State.
But never since Springfield.
Okay. I know the difference between Brookings and Ramillion, but I don't know Missouri. But anyway, we wish him all, we wish him all the, all the best. The position has been posted, just to make you aware and ask for your approval, uh, accept the notice.
All right, uh, we need a motion for that, you said, and that's, okay, so we'll make that motion, please.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Kent?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
Brewster?
Hi.
Okay. And yes, uh, I'd like to just wish James the best as well as he pursues career, career opportunities. All right, we are on to reports. Sam, is there anything else you'd like to?
Yes, I do have a very brief, uh, report. I was at a League of Cities meeting on Tuesday, the twelfth, and one of the topics was lack of grants for wastewater treatment plants. And we are not the only ones to have experienced concern and criticism regarding, uh, this particular issue. One of the other city managers in the meeting said, we don't want SRF, which is state revolving fund. We, um, that's a loan. We need grants. And so a lot of other cities are, are upset as well about this unfunded mandate. DNR, in the meeting that I was in, confirmed that there were very few grants available, but they defended it by saying cities had a long time to comply and save up. Some cities did very large increases like we did, others, uh, did smaller increases over time. It's all painful. And I just wanted to make you aware of that discussion. On that note, you know, earlier, I believe it was this year, there was a water, a water rate study authorized, I think it was two years ago that was authorized. And so Todd and I are working through that with DGR, and we plan on bringing that forward as soon as possible. And one of the items in that water rate increase will be a component for capital improvement savings. So we're, we're hoping to avoid the situation, uh, that we've had with wastewater treatment plant by the, by any, by trying to save up over time and build, uh, build funds that we can handle capital improvements with. On the note of water and wastewater, we also discover, I also discovered in looking in the minutes from when I was researching Lewis and Clark, in the minutes of May eighteen, two thousand and five, at that time, the city reallocated a dollar and sixty-seven cent a month wastewater surcharge, reallocated it to, uh, water, and added two dollars to it for Lewis and Clark. So that helped us save up for Lewis and Clark and our water needs, but we ended up in a, further in the hole on wastewater. And not to be critical of that decision, because a dollar sixty-seven a month for twenty-two hundred accounts, even over the period of ten or fourteen years, still is a drop in the bucket on a ten-and-a-half million dollar plant. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of the conversation that I had had with DNR, the League of Cities. Uh, we're not alone, and we're hoping to learn from the lessons on the wastewater treatment plant side as we plan for, uh, water rates, and there, there will be, uh, a capital improvements component, uh, built into the plan when it comes forward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Council comments from the two that are here?
Nope.
Monday, December 2nd, Rec Trails Belgian Waffle Supper. You can buy your tickets from the Rec Trails people or State Farm.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Also, a couple of comments. This one just handed to me. On Wednesday, the 27th, a week from today, from, is it four to seven? No. Oh, no, this is swearing. No, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
His party's Monday night.
At 12:30, 12:30 on the 27th, we will be swearing in David Dykstra as the interim chief of police. There will be a presentation of the badge and pins. Basically, we'll just be administering the oath of office, so just a note on that. And then another note regarding Lyle Balkman's last day is November 27, and there is going to be a party, yes, at the Crossroads Pavilion. What are you, what are you making? What are you bringing?
Monday, the 25th.
What are we going to be eating? What are we?
Pork loin.
Pork loin.
My wife calls it a life love. It sounds pretty good.
So you have the opportunity to come out and give Lyle and his family your well wishes to participate in eating of the pork loin and a few other goodies, I'm sure. We thank you for that, Lyle. And that is an open house from four to seven, as I recall.
On Monday, the 25th?
Monday, the 25th, it's coming Monday, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I forgot about you, Pete.
I'm, I'm on the road, and I'm not going to be back in time for Lyle's party, so I would like to thank him for all his years of service, and I'll pick it up when I get back.
All right, very good. I have nothing further, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Oh, 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 oh.
Just for clarification, is that to expand the?
I would say yes.
That's where I was sitting. $6,500 for an ambulance isn't much. And if we have three, maybe we can keep more miles down in the long run.
Do we have to go back and amend my motion?
No, your motion was to approve the resolution for purchase.
Resolution, yeah, for a purchase of a new one.
I would just make a, I would just make a motion to authorize the, the expansion under item G2, subpart 2.
Oh, Sean comes up with a question about parking. We discussed that the other night. Now, if somebody wants to elaborate, if Kevin wants to?
Where to park the ambulance you're talking about now?
Yeah, if they keep the third one.
I can elaborate on that. We are having EMA. They have endorsed us to go to the library and park in their garage, and we will take that third stall of the ambulance shed. Good question.
Okay.
And if we need a motion, I'll make the motion that we keep the ambulance and have three.
We should because the item's on the agenda, so it's already published, so we would need a motion, item G, part 2.
So you're moving that we keep the ambulance?
Add a third ambulance, yes.
Okay. I'll second that. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
All right, thanks for taking care of that now, Kevin.
Again, you got to get that.
All right, comments are, did we have a motion to adjourn yet?
I think they stopped.
I was, I made the motion.
I thought I heard a little bit. I started.
I made the motion, but it never got a second.
Okay.
Running roughshod of Robert's order here, but we have the motion.
We've got a motion. I don't, I need a second.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Kent.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Hamel.
All right.
Hi.
Good.